Hi, call this meeting to order. This is the regular meeting of the Northfield Public School Board. Today is Monday, November 25th, 2019, and the time is 7:00 PM. Dr. Hillman, there were some items in the table file.
Yes, in the table file, you had some updates, documents for the later school start time update and discussion. You also had a gift agreement, and you had some personnel items.
Okay, thank you very much. We'll add these items to the agenda as we move forward. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as presented? Moved by Jeff. Is there a second? Second by Ellen. Albows in favor of approving the agenda as presented? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We now have an opportunity for residents, business and property owners, parents, students, and employees of the Northfield Public School District to address the board. Is there anyone here who wishes to address the board? Okay, prior to coming forward, I will just read the public comment guidelines real quickly. We ask that you adhere to the following guidelines set in place by District Policy 206 regarding public comment. This is a listening opportunity for the board and not a time to debate an issue. Also, the Minnesota Government Data Practices Act prohibits comments about specific student matters, even without naming the student in open session. This includes the public comment portion of our meeting. The board respects and values input on student matters, but when it relates to a specific student or a specific student matter, such input must be heard by the appropriate personnel, such as the building principal or superintendent, and not during an open meeting of the school board. It is expected that members of the public will address the remarks with civility and respect. So with that being said, please step to the podium, identify yourself by stating your name, and if you represent a group, and we ask that you limit your remarks to three minutes. Welcome.
My name is Chris Nesset, and I live at 5765 115th Street East in Northfield. I'm here today representing me and my family. I'm here regarding the later start time, actually more about the later dismissal time. Obviously, the benefits to a later start time can't really be debated, I mean, that's obvious, but I think the problem lies in a later dismissal. I looked at the documentation that's available that was given by the committee, and one of those being the Minnesota Sleep Study, and they left off the page that showed which schools in Minnesota actually had started them, and so I was curious. I went and looked up that, and the earliest start time they have on that is 8:00 AM. The latest start time is 8:50. The earliest release is 2:30, and the latest release is 3:25. So, the committee based their recommendation based off this study, but we're recommending an 8:45 start with a 3:45 dismissal. If you read also, I think it was the Wallstrom Report that the Minnesota Sleep Study uses, the athletic directors say that it won't affect athletics if it's not more than a half an hour later, and I believe we're going for an hour. So, the reason I'm here tonight is because of the email that was recently sent out. I really hate public speaking. Because it shows all the benefits that you have for a later start time, but it doesn't talk about what happens with that later dismissal, and I think that needs to be shared. Nordic has practices after school for two hours. The sun sets at 4:30 in the winter. That cuts back their practices by an hour. I have a gymnast that leaves for practice at 3:00 and gets back at 6:30. I have a golfer, you know, she's gonna lose yet another hour of school when she is dismissed. So, and AP classes are usually seventh hour, at least she's told me she's gonna have an AP course seventh hour, which she's concerned about. So, that just means more and more hours they might miss. So, my request to the district, or to what you would consider, is great, later start time, but what about keeping the dismissal shorter, and maybe a shorter day, change the calendar, different options, and present that? And that is what I hope the school board will consider.
Okay. Chris, thank you for your remarks. Is there anyone else who wishes to address the board? Okay, welcome.
My name is Michelle Cole. I am a parent in the district. I'm also a mental health therapist and a licensed alcohol and drug counselor, and I worked for the district in the past as a prevention specialist, mainly focusing on chemical health, mental health, and truancy prevention. First, I want to just say that I've always been impressed with the work done in the Northfield District, and I'm grateful to have students attending elementary, middle, and high school here. When we moved a couple of years ago, we were strategic in making sure that we would be located within the district's boundaries for the education that's provided here. Second, I'm here to comment on the district's consideration of pushing back the start times for middle and high school students. While I appreciate the district's effort to address student wellness and achievement, and think that's important, it seems as if there's been an absolute focus on this one strategy, rather than exploring a variety of strategies that may address the issues of concern, and then talking to students, staff, and parents about all of those. The perception is strengthened by the district's choice of language in listening sessions, and now the survey that came out just this evening. I think we all know that language that we use matters. It shapes our message, and it shapes the perceptions of others in a positive and a negative way. If I say, "A benefit of using this new schedule is that it will improve student mental health," that's misleading. It should be stated as research indicated indicates that these types of schedules can be correlated with some, for example, improvement in mood. And if I say rural busing students may not benefit from the later start times, what I should be saying is rural busing students will likely receive little to no benefit, as busing times are likely to remain the same, and they will actually suffer due to getting home much later than before. I would encourage the district to postpone any decisions until a fuller examination of strategies can be made, and if that examination has already been made, it should be shared with the stakeholders. I would also remind all of us again to be cautious with the language we're using. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone here who wishes to address the board? Okay, seeing no one come forward, we'll move on to announcements and recognitions. Dr. Hillman?
We just have one announcement this evening, and I apologize, I don't have a copy for all of you yet, but we'll pass this around. So, this is a new magazine that was produced by our Northfield High School InDesign class, and when you think, when you look through it, I think you're going to swear that it was done by a professional agency. So, Terry Reitberg, the teacher of our InDesign class, has resurrected the Periscope. The Periscope used to be a newspaper within the school system, and they've reissued it as an issue-oriented magazine. And what you'll notice is that a lot of the writing is actually done by our own staff. It's the students who then take that, just like an editor would, you know, at a magazine, and they will edit it, they will put it together, and so I'm gonna pass this around, and we're gonna work to get a copy for each of you for the next board meeting. But this is an example of the real-world career and college-ready kind of work that's happening at our school. This is beautiful, and they just, I believe they did a phenomenal job, and I want to share it with you. So, they did a limited printing to start, but they're using industry-standard tools, and it is just a gorgeous piece around the power of stress. So, I'll start it with Amy, and then we'll just pass it through the meeting, and people can take a look at it, and like I said, I'll promise to get you another copy, but just another example of the work that we're doing to try to prepare students for whatever the pathway is that they choose after high school. And that's all I have tonight.
Excellent. Board members, anything anyone wishes to add? No? Okay, we'll move on to items for discussion. We begin welcoming Craig Pappenhagen, Principal of Clifton Larson Allen, to present the results of the 2018-19 fiscal year audit.
Very good.
Welcome, Craig.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I've got just a short presentation that I'll run through with you this evening. If there's questions, certainly you can ask as we go along, or we'll certainly have some time at the end as well. We issued a clean audit opinion on the financial statements, so comfortable with the numbers as presented. Got all the information we had asked for during the course of completing the audit and performing the onsite fieldwork. So, we have no findings in internal controls over financial reporting. We also looked at compliance under Uniform Guidance, which, what that means is the federal grant programs that the district operates. We tested compliance on special education and Title I programs this year. We had no findings on those. Minnesota legal compliance, some required testing of compliance that we have to do for certain statutes in our state code, and we had no findings there with respect to the district. And then we also do a similar test of compliance with respect to the Student Activity Funds. No findings there either. So, very good audit results, no findings whatsoever, and that's a notable accomplishment. Probably, I would say, less than probably 20% of our clients get a clean bill of health in that regard. If we look at just some financial results then, the general fund, this is the main operating fund of the district, so this is the year ended June 30, 2019. Total revenues, just over $57 million, just under $57 million in expenditures, so that was a net add to fund balance of $298,000. Couple things happening in the 2019 year, your additional operating referendum, so about a half million dollars of additional tax revenues coming through, thanks to the support of your citizens of your district. Also, the general education formula rate that the state uses to fund general education aid increased by about $120 a student as well. So, that brought in some additional revenues for the district. So, in total, again, looking at general fund revenues, this is kind of the distribution, where the money came from. The purple shaded section of the pie chart there is the state-funded portion, or state-controlled portion, and that's almost 70% of your funding for the general fund. Property taxes write at about 24%. That, the property tax section also includes that half-million-dollar operating referendum. Let's see, so this is kind of comparing 2019 revenues, same comparison to 2018. Your revenue portion, what you see is that your property taxes make a little bit bigger portion because of the operating referendum this year, and that kind of shrinks the portion that makes, that is made up by state aid. So, with the different funding sources, it kind of expands one slice of the pie and contracts another. And likewise, expenditures, so what we're kind of breaking down on the left is the total expenditures that are coming through, and on the right, the portion that is going back into the classroom, so instruction-related or instruction-support-related. In total, about 70, almost 79% of the general fund expenditures are going back into the classroom, and that's a little bit different compared to the year prior. This is 2018. 2018, about 82% went back into the classroom. The reason for the change is the, you entered into a new iPad lease, and we have to code that out as an expenditure. So, what you see kind of toggling back and forth is your capital-related portion of the pie is about 7% for 2019, whereas last year, a year ago, is about 3%. So, that capital-related portion makes a difference. And if we look at kind of the enrollment trends, you see a pretty, pretty stable enrollment over the last two years, nevertheless, five years of positive. So, there are not many districts that can show that trend either. So, part of it, I think, just being in a, in a good place, and attractive place for people to want to live, I think attractive curriculum and learning results that people want to provide to their kids. So, that's what I would attribute that to. Those are my prepared remarks. If we have questions, certainly entertain some questions.
Excellent, thank you. Board members, questions, comments? I just had one question. Did someone? I missed, oh, I'm sorry, Ellen, go ahead.
No, I didn't have a question. I was just going to commend Val, because this is the first time I actually ever remember an audit being absolutely completely clean. I mean, these are, sometimes there's small findings that are just, you know, like, we also congratulate you, because it's just, you know, it's been routine for us to hear these remarkable audit results, but this one is just really, really commendable, because I know every time you get a small finding, whether however small it is, you spend so much time thinking through the processes and the procedures, and it's just, congratulations. This is just really wonderful.
Other comments, questions? Well said, as always, Ellen, and, you know, we all echo Ellen's remarks for sure, because it's just really impressive, and when you think that less than 20% of the district statewide achieved these kinds of results in their audits, that's, that's a significant and really important result that I think we need to talk about, because it just, we really, it just shows and demonstrates how high, you know, the priority of stewardship and the commitment to ensuring that, you know, we're doing things the way we need to do them, and Val, you just have worked so hard, and your staff as well, so congratulations. Tom, did I, oh, no, I'm sorry.
And I would congratulate you also, and it's not the first time we get a good audit report. It's been frequent and regular, and thank you.
I had one question, because Ellen kind of alluded to the minor findings we used to find with the student activity, and that was really the only thing that we ever had. And then, thanks to GASP84, we're now in a new world, and I just wondered, from your perspective, what you're seeing other districts, just kind of your thoughts around GASP84, because we know now those accounts are under board control. We don't have an option there, but clearly, it's helped with that sort of issue we had. But just from your perspective, any comments you have?
Well, generally, with the new standard, student activity funds pretty much are all gonna be rolled back into and reported as part of the general fund. So, kind of, whereas years prior, they used to be kind of off on their own, now they're gonna be under the umbrella of your finance department. Now, just for a point of clarity, the 18-19 audit that you're looking at, that has student activity funds the way you've always known them.
Oh, exactly. Nineteen, yes. Okay, thank you. That's right, I'm sorry.
On July 1st of 19.
That's even more impressive. I was thinking GASP84 was reflected in these audit results, so thank you for clarifying that.
Yep, very good.
All my reason to congratulate Val.
I appreciate your enthusiasm to change it, but yeah, we're happy to not have that changed in this year's audit yet. So, that'll be something to look forward to for next year's presentation.
Okay, all right, good.
I'm not sure everyone has used the term "GASP" and "look forward to" in the same words.
Well, some of us really enjoy it, so, you know.
Not many.
Would it be okay if I just kind of had a couple comments, just to tie to?
Oh, absolutely.
Tie some of the numbers, just because the presentation for the financial statement purposes is slightly different than the numbers that I present to you. So, I did run the numbers excluding the capital lease for the iPad, just to run the numbers on the amount of expenditures that we had for regular instructional and student support services, and it came to 82.0% again, so very consistent with the prior year, when you take out that, the factor of the lease. And then, the overall fund balance, so I had projected growing the overall fund balance about $434,000, and growing the unassigned fund balance about $151,000. And we actually grew the fund balance 298, sorry, 99,000, and the unassigned about $132,000, so fairly close to actually what the budget said. The budget to actual numbers look a little bit off, and there's various reasons for that, the lease being one of them, but the other thing that is included in this that's hard to kind of peel out is that we purchased, the actual purchase of the Gleason property, the shop property, was $590,000. That expenditure happened in this audit year, but the revenue is not coming until next fiscal year, just due to the timing of when we could close on that lease purchase financing. So, actually, this fund balance of the 132 for the unassigned is actually higher than that, just because of the year switch for that. So, I just wanted to highlight that. And overall, our ADMs came in less than what I had actually projected in our revised budget, but our special ad revenue came in higher than I had projected. All of that kind of washed itself out, and the numbers came out pretty close. So, the actual unassigned fund balance, as I presented to you, was just shy of $11 million. It was $10,999,774, which is about 19.9%. So, just wanted to give you that, because that's the context that you normally hear from me, so to kind of tie back these numbers for that, and I'll talk more at our December 9th meeting with the Truth in Taxation about the revised budget and kind of pulling all that together, so you can see it in print as well. So, just wanted to highlight that.
Excellent, thanks for the further clarification. Any questions on anything that Val just clarified? Yeah, okay, great. Thank you. And Craig, thank you for the great work you do for our district. We really appreciate it.
Thank you very much, and happy to be in service.
Okay, so we will move on now to, we welcome Principal Nancy Antoine from Bridgewater Elementary School, providing, which is really fun. Just a brief update on what's happening at Bridgewater, since we last saw Nancy in, was it here in August?
I believe that's what it was.
Yes. So, Nancy was here in August presenting the school improvement plan, and now we're going to hear a brief update on what's happening at Bridgewater. So, welcome, Nancy.
Fantastic. Thank you very much, and thank you for the time to present. Obviously, we have a lot of things going on at Bridgewater right now. If you look at what's going, going well, the big things stand out to you. Obviously, we've had a construction project, and we're under construction. We got the, the fire marshal came through today, and we are cleared to move in. I moved my first boxes in already tonight, and it's, it is exciting. The exciting part for me is having a secure, secure entrance, so that when any guests come in the building, we know exactly who's in our building, because they have to go through the office to start with, and then they have to sign in, and then be buzzed into the rest of the building. So, that really makes me, it gives me a huge sense of relief, knowing that our entrance is secure. Laura Greenland has done a nice job being our greeter up until this point, and we've really appreciated her services, and as of next week, we will no longer need her services because we will be up front. The crew that we've been working with have been outstanding. They're, I mean, they've become part of our Bridgewater family. It's, it's really fun to have them in the building, and you know, you kind of get a chance to know what their areas of expertise are, and we can ask them just, just those little things, you know, "Have you thought about this?" Like, today I was showing them one part on the wall. "What about, what about this?" "Oh, that'll be done tomorrow. That's, that part's on the schedule, and it's on the punch list." I've learned a whole new group of acronyms that I won't go through tonight, but I never thought I needed to know all those things, but obviously, I did. But a really nice crew, and I'm really looking forward to the construction projects at Greenville Park and S W B, because I think that they're going to enjoy the crew that we're, we're working with. Obviously, with phase number one, being, being to the point of, we're, like I said, moving in, starting on Monday, we'll be in there, and then the phase number two is turning the current office space into our special education suite, and that should be done right around winter break. Looking forward to that piece, actually giving us some more space, because we are definitely out of room. All of our closets and nooks and crannies are, are all being occupied right now, and it's gonna be nice to have some of our storage spaces back to being just that, storage spaces. So, looking forward to that one. We've been working with our, through the information given to us by the DSA committee that met this summer, we have decided to start working with our enrichment groups this year. And so, the enrichment groups currently are serving 55 students in reading and 49 students in math. The picture you see here is one of our first grade groups, our first grade enrichment, math enrichment group, and I tell you, the excitement, you could, you could not imagine the excitement. For a group of kids who, initially, I had some questions from parents about, "Well, what do you mean, my child is struggling?" And when they got, when they got the letter, the notify, and their child qualifies for the enrichment groups, and I had to explain that your child is doing really, really well, and that's why they qualify for an enrichment group. And this, it's not a group of kids who are used to being quote-unquote "borrowed," as we, as we call it. We don't call them, they have to go for services. They get borrowed, and this group is so excited to be borrowed. They come in there, and they're just very enthusiastic about learning new math strategies, math tips. So, that's been, it's been exciting to listen to them, listen to their chatter as they come and go. Right now, they've been, they're, the space that they're learning is in the, actually in the office space, so they have to come and, come and go all the time, and it's, I get to, I get to listen to them, and just to hear the, the brief conversations is just, just a delight. So, as you can see, they're all full of smiles, and they're a happy group. Mrs. Lane is doing the bulk of the work with, especially with their math students, and then we've got Teresa Bowman, who's working with our literacy students, along with Hope Langston, who's also working with some of our literacy groups. So, that's going very well this year. The teachers have, when I did my rounding conversations with teachers, I had many comments about how the second year of CCC is going really well. So, they know what to expect, they're tracking along, and, and then they're able to insert their own personality into the curriculum, and that has been very advantageous. When you, whenever you adopt a curriculum, it's like, "Well, how am I, how am I gonna, how am I gonna tweak it so that, you know, it's, it's what I'm teaching, not just what the, what the script says?" But now that they know where they can insert themselves into that, and they're excited about, about teaching this the second year around. We've got a lot of parent events that we, that we do use to improve our climate. Tomorrow, for example, we have our grandparents' day, so we're gonna have a, a full house all day long, but talk about fun. And even today, leaving, I had a parent saying, "Well, my mom is gonna be here tomorrow. You know, she just retired last month, and she's excited to come see, come see her grandchildren." And it's been fun. We had one set of grandparents that showed up today, but, you know, we welcome them all. And I would really want to thank Stephanie Strummy for changing our menu so we can have a, we have a real nice lunch for tomorrow. So, it's the traditional turkey and gravy and mashed potatoes and everything for lunch, as opposed to, you know, offering grandparents, you know, cheese sticks or, or something of that nature. So, she's got a very nice menu planned for the grandparents tomorrow. So, lots of things going well. A couple other things I wanted to point out is our RCD training. This is Responsibility-Centered Discipline Training we did this fall with all three elementary schools, all of the licensed staff. We had Larry Thompson come in and teaching, teaching the staff the tips about give 'em five, making sure that the kids know, you know, that there is a benefit for them to actually behave. We have some expectations. Here's what our expectations are. Here's the pieces that you're falling down in, but here's the support I'm gonna offer you, and then closing that up so that they know how they can meet, meet that criteria. Again, it's teaching kids how to take responsibility for their own behavior, rather than us always coming up with the ideas, asking the students, you know, "What is it gonna take for, what is it gonna take for you to change some of the things you do?" And seeing the differences that makes in, in some of the kids, because they understand that, yeah, some of your behaviors might be, they may be fun, they, you might think they're funny, but when you look at it in the big picture, okay, so who has to actually clean up after you when you make that huge mess that was obviously fun for you, but now someone else has to clean that up? And so, for them to understand that, "Oh, yeah, that's right, that's, yeah, if I'm, if I want my teacher to trust me, I need to change some of my behavior." So, that's, that was a great training for our staff. We've got a group from, from the three elementary schools that are attending RCD II tomorrow, and that's being held in Little Canada, so looking at some of our behavior coaches and some of our key staff, people attending that training, so looking forward to seeing what they learn. Also, a couple other things, we've got strong teams in our building, and our, our parent involvement is, I would say, second to none. We've got, we have, we've got parents who really do believe in that partnership with educators, so that we can, we can help their children to be successful. And I just, I commend our parents for asking questions. How can I, how can I help more? What else can I do? You know, how could I keep my child challenged? So, that's been, that's been wonderful. It's, it's like one big happy family, where we all have to ask each other, "Okay, what can be, what can we do differently to positively affect each individual child?" Things we're trying to, or problems we're trying to solve. Obviously, there's, we've got, we've got a huge, almost a crisis with children's mental health right now, and looking at, looking at kids who really come from struggling backgrounds, and yet- And looking at kids who really come from struggling backgrounds and yet they're, it's almost daily, I look at some of the kids who should be, who should be almost curled up in a fetal position and they're so successful, they're doing far better than what they should be doing. It's amazing how resilient our children are. And it's, if you knew a child's story, it would bring you to tears. But when you see how well they do in spite of that, it's just amazing. When you see that little kid who goes home to some questionable things every single night and you see them helping other children. And again, I sometimes wonder where they get that resiliency from, but they do and they modeled some really positive behavior for all of us. And actually, they modeled some great behavior for even our adults so we can see how even in lieu of all the things that are happening in their personal lives, they're doing very, very well. And again, that partnership comes into play where you're getting the grandparents asking, you know, will you please keep a child, keep an eye on my grandchild, making sure that they're doing okay because, you know, X, Y, and Z isn't going as well at home. So those are the things that we continue to work with through our SEL curriculum. That has really helped. Again, with the Responsibility Center Discipline, those are things that are helping. But it sure would be nice if we could take care of all of the ACEs score, the adverse childhood experience scores. One of the things that we're, again, we're taking a look at is our math curriculum. Everyday math is a spiral curriculum, so they can learn one concept and then it spirals, they're not gaining mastery at any one concept. And the spiral is nice in that it's brought up many times, but especially with some of our struggling students, that they need to get a grasp on, okay, I have to master this concept before I can get to the next one in order to retain that information. So that's something that we're taking a look at. And even for some of our higher math students, I don't think it's serving them as well as it could. So that's just a fact. And I gave you a little graphic there on what each one, what mastery means, mastery learning means and spiral learning, so you can kind of see how that one works. Mastery is basically step by step by step. Whereas spiral, it, you learn a concept, you learn another concept, you dig deeper into the concepts, but it's spiraling all the time. One other area that we're, that's kind of has been a problem, but yet at the same time it solves a bigger problem, is we're down one of our academic coaches this year. And this was something that we hadn't anticipated, the numbers at our ALC, especially our EL numbers. And so Inger Hansen, who was one of our academic coaches, was asked if she would go over to the ALC and help out with that influx of numbers over there. I know why they asked her for her to go. She's fantastic. She does a great job with our EL students there. It left us a divot and yet we're trying to, we're trying our best to get that one filled. Teresa Bowman and Hope Langston both are helping too. And Mary Hansen are all three helping to backfill that position that Inger's missed. And I know she's, I saw her the other day, she's happy. She's, and like I said, I know she'll do a fantastic job with the students there. It's just that we miss her, that's it. And then again, our large numbers, we've got close to 600 students again this year and that really does prohibit our space. And then of course, the things that we're constantly trying to work on is continuous learning and improvement. Again, we teach, I teach tomorrow what I learned about my students today. So we're constantly looking at, okay, what can we learn about our, what can we learn about our learners? And how can we positively affect that the next day? And that whole thing of being open to change. If you're not open to change, you can miss a lot of opportunities. And again, looking at the kids and asking yourself, what could I do differently to make this child successful? And thinking about it individually, not just as a group of students. And as you see from the picture on the right there, we had our Veterans Day Assembly the other day. This was the group that attended our, this was some of the veterans that attended our assembly again. I just can't tell you enough on how proud I am of our students and the work they do for Veterans Day. To be able to speak to our veterans and have them understand that, yes, our students remember what you've done. We've taught them how to honor people who they don't know, but these people who have given so much for our freedom. And so those are some real positive moments for our building. And I would say many of our positive moments are centered around work we do for other people and telling other people thank you, like our bus drivers appreciation breakfast, things of that nature where we say thank you because number one, it's the right thing to do and number two, we know what other people do for us. We know what our bus drivers do to keep our kids safe every single day. We know what our veterans have done for us to keep us safe every day. And then the picture on the left here is our new construction. It even looks a little better now with the heating ventilation and air conditioning unit that's on top of the building. I always think, okay, what does HVAC stand for?
Yeah.
I think I got it. Any questions that you have made tonight?
Excellent update. Thank you Nancy.
Thank you.
Questions, comments? Ellen?
So I already teed this up with Nancy, but I was really interested when I saw your update in comments about the spiraling curriculum and I was thinking about just how long it's been in the district and the ways that we've already tried to augment it. So can you talk a little bit about, like maybe even with our RTI coaches, like how have you sort of worked around this as a problem?
Sure. And I don't know precisely how many years it's been here. It's been here ever since I've been here and I'm in year 13. So I would say it's been at least 16 years, if not longer than that. Some of the things that we've done to try to bolster that curriculum is by adding, when we did Rocket Math to begin with, now we're using extra math on the iPad. So because one of the things that we did learn early on is that everyday math is weakened computation. And so we've tried to supplement the curriculum by using things like the everyday math and the Rocket Math so that kids can practice their basic math facts. Because if they don't have those down, it becomes really challenging because you start with your whole numbers, add, subtract, multiply, and divide, then you're switching to decimals, then you're switching to fractions. And without those basic skills, it makes it really difficult to get up there into that higher math. So those are some of the things that we've done and really looking at, the teachers have looked at some of the strand information, especially from the MAP assessment and then honing in on some of those units and helping to supplement that with additional work. That.
Other questions, comments? Amy?
Good evening.
Hi.
I don't really have a question, but I just wanted to thank you for your presentation and for your enthusiasm and for your engagement in teaching our students and working with the students and the whole school administration. So thank you for all you do and I'm happy that you're part of the district.
Well, thank you very much. I tell you, I couldn't be happier getting to do what I could get to do on a daily basis. It's really a great opportunity, especially all you've got to do is walk in and see those little faces. And it's, I just can't understand, my whole piece is, I just want to do more. And yet I realize there's only 24 hours in the day and I have to realize that every now and then. But it's exciting work. Our kids deserve it.
Other questions, comments?
Rob? So at our last meeting, we approved going ahead to hire a new EA because of the Title I equity between buildings. And that was suggested that might help a little bit with what you're feeling with the loss of the coach. So I'm wondering if you could talk a little bit about how that EA might be used?
Yeah, and that position we have posted right now. And I know one grade in particular, first grade is a grade that I would like to use that EA with to help with the, could be helping with progress monitoring, could be helping, it could help with some of the students who are lacking their basic skills, like working through their high frequency words, making sure they know that. If you've got a student who does not know all their letters yet, helping with letter identification, with the letter sounds, things of that nature. But we can also jump over into kids who don't know basic math facts as well. So I know first grade is one of the areas that I like to use that person with and I just need to decide whether it's going to be with the other half of the day working with either second grade or third grade. Third grade, we've got, well, actually second and third, we've got some pretty large numbers. Third grade is sitting at about 26, 27 per classroom. So that would be a nice way to help bring down some of those numbers as well. So just trying to get another set of hands that can work with a group of students. I'm very appreciative for that person because that will help us.
Other questions, comments? Jeff?
Thank you for your presentation. I'd also like to thank you and your staff for always keeping a part of your curriculum to honor our veterans, to show and teach dignity, honor, and respect. I mean, that can be as simple as please and thank you, but it's nice for these young people to see faces behind veterans and it's good to have the veterans interact with the kids a little bit. So that's a great tradition. Keep it going and God bless you for that.
Thank you very much. I did get an email from my predecessor, Diane Kittleberg, who again, was so thankful that we've carried on the tradition of the Veterans Day Assembly. And she's like, I hear it's gotten even better. And it's like, well, we try to improve every year. But you know, one of the stories that I read at the Assembly this year was veterans in our neighborhoods. And it was basically a story about where all of our veterans are. There, our veterans are in amongst us all the time. And it can be someone at the grocery store, it can be someone at the barber shop, things of that nature so that our kids realize that veterans are everywhere. But the bottom line is, we need, when we get the opportunity, we need to say thank you. But thank you very much.
Well said, Jeff. Thank you. Other questions, comments?
I had a couple comments. I'm really glad you provided the update on the Responsibility Center Discipline because you had presented in August and the training hadn't occurred and you were really excited about it. So just maybe some quick, brief comments on how the staff and administration are feeling about the training and then sort of the implementation.
I would say that the whole presentation went over very positively to the point where as soon as he was done presenting, numerous teachers coming up, and not just from Bridgewater, but from all three elementary schools and saying, can we take the second training? Whoa, okay, yeah. And I said, let's, you know, hold a roll a minute here, but at the same time, let's see how the, let's see how the strategies go working in your classroom and we'll work at providing that. One area that we need to do more work with that is with our educational assistants because we haven't trained them, they weren't at the training because we had a cap on the numbers we could allow. But that's one thing. Adam Danielson is going to the training tomorrow and I asked him to basically talk to Larry about when would be a good time to train our educational assistants and maybe some other people in the building. So I see the strategies have been used. I would say one person that I think has used the strategies brilliantly is Brittany Heller-Busch. She's a second grade teacher and she talked about using the skills at gymnastics practice when she was there with her own son. And she really has, she's got that give them five down to a T and she could turn things around where the gymnastic instructor said, how did you do that? What did you do to that kid to turn him around? And so I see some really good work in terms of teacher language. It also helps keep your cool. You're not engaging in that whole struggle with the kid. You're just helping facilitate them working through what they have done and what they need to do to improve rather than, I don't need to get upset or angry at the child, just asking the questions. You know, what, how do you want your teacher to look at you? Do you want your teacher to, do you want your teacher to be able to trust you if the teacher sends you up in the hallway to use the bathroom and you're messing with the water fountain? You know, how can your teacher trust you when you're doing that? So it's more questions as opposed to, it's not accusations. It's questions so they can see, oh, this is what I need to do to change.
Excellent. Thank you. And then just wanted to thank you for the effort and the energy that you have put into the new addition and now subsequently the remodel of the old office into new classroom space. We know that's a lot, you know, just obviously we know there's a lot on an administrator's plate, but adding that was not insignificant. And so I'm glad that you now have a working language of the construction industry, but that did not come without a lot of extra time and effort. So we have to thank you for that because it was a lot and it will continue to be a lot until well into January. So thank you for that.
Thank you. And it's been fun every now and then. Every now and then our weekly meetings, I may or may not bring them cookies, but I know that doesn't meet the health and wellness policy, but I'm not beating the kids, I'm beating the adults.
We know a well-fed construction crew is a happy construction crew.
Yes, there might be a method to my madness there, but I have found that they like chocolate chip cookies and they like Rice Krispies, so.
Excellent. Well, Caduceo Construction has been great partners in all of this. So thank you for appreciating their work too.
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
And have a wonderful Thanksgiving.
Thank you. You too.
Okay, so we can now move on to our item for discussion. Dr. Hillman is going to provide an update on the late start for secondary schools. As a reminder, there was some additional information in your table file. So if board members want to be sure they have access to that, Dr. Hillman?
Yes, there is an updated discussion and plan overview in your table file based upon a couple of additional feedback sessions that we've had. The first thing I want to say is that it has been just uplifting to have had so many people come forward to engage in this process. We had about 140 people engage in those two sessions last week. Parents, community members, AP psych students, all sorts of different people who really worked together. And I was really proud of Northfielders, as I always am, to come into a discussion that people have differing perspectives on and different concerns and different thoughts. And we watched people work in small groups together and many of you attended at least one of those sessions and we really got some really great feedback from people. So you'll see that the piece that you have in here is really an update of what I, of a plan I have started to give you in October. We're really kind of showing you authentically how this is being developed rather than, you know, coming to you with this is the way it is because we wanted to show you where we were starting with those preliminary scheduling parameters and then showing you how it is continuing to evolve. So one of the things that you will see in the new part of this document is the feedback section. And so not only have we had at least one feedback session for staff at every building so far, except for the area learning center, we'll have those folks on December 10. We had two at the high school because it's a large staff and a lot of folks coach after school. So we wanted to make sure there was an opportunity for that. We had the two feedback sessions, listening sessions last week. The district youth council also solicited feedback from Northfield High School students. They had that meeting last Wednesday during the flex hour. They had 25 people attend. I had a chance to attend their meeting this morning to be able to hear the debrief on that feedback. So we've had some great feedback so far. As we had talked about this afternoon, we did launch another feedback opportunity, an online feedback opportunity for parents so that people who could not attend one of the sessions last week could provide their thoughts. We asked very similar questions to what we asked last week so that we could hear from people who could not attend last week responses to the similar questions that we had asked. So we will see, we're going to leave that open through not this Friday, but next Friday. So we'll send out a reminder next week on that. What I provided in the middle is just a very high level overview of the three main questions, the benefits, the problems, and the questions question. And then I've also provided you in your packet with the notes from every feedback session that we've had. So whether it was a staff feedback session, you've got a summary from the district youth council. In tonight's table file, there was an update that included the feedback from the November 21 parent session. We of course couldn't get that in your packet in time to get it in the mail on Friday. So you will also see when we get the parent survey feedback, you'll also get that. We're also looking at some additional stakeholder feedback from staff and from students. So what we wanted to do is provide you all of this information, you know, based upon the thought processes that we've had to this point. You'll see that there are some updated start and end times based on our ongoing work with Benjamin Bus. One piece I do want to point out is I did include in this evening's table file a very detailed email from Nancy Johnson. Some of you might remember Nancy, she worked for Benjamin Bus for a number of years. She was the chief router and so she knows the bus routes in the community probably better than anybody else. John Benjamin has asked her to come back to consult for this project. And so there are some very transparent thought processes in that email behind transportation. While there are pathways to make a later start work and a different sequence in terms of the high school starting last and the elementary school starting first, there are some significant concerns as well. It is, we have a very fine-tuned bus system right now that has been worked on for 15 or so years and has just kept being fine-tuned. It's very efficient. It's provided by a great provider. And when you disrupt a schedule like that, you know, for a different schedule, you will have issues to begin with for sure. So I'm going to give you just one example of the, and as soon as you hear it, you say, duh, of course, you know, that's how this rolls, is that Nancy's very methodical and she talks about, yes, if we start the middle school second, you know, then all of the buses... of the buses make a left out of the middle school and a left into the high school." And I see some cognitive shift in people, because, yep, trying to make a left out of the middle school at that time of the day, and a left into the high school is a challenging piece. By this time, there should be a roundabout, which would actually help with the flow through that area, but it doesn't negate the fact that your buses would have to make a left out of each of those, left out of the middle school and a left into the high school. This is the kind of transparent piece we're just trying to share with you as we go along. Again, there are some pathways to make it work, but it would not be nearly as smooth, at least to begin with, as we have right now. We know when you change something, then, of course, you just, you know, continue to improve it, but it would be pretty different from the very smooth system that we have right now. So a couple of pieces that I want to just really be clear is that, of course, as you have known, we're not asking you to make any kind of decision on this until the earliest late January, right? It wouldn't be before that second board meeting in January. We have a work session coming up on the 16th to really dive into it. Again, trying to give you all this information, so that we can put these together and get your thoughts on it. There are a couple of pieces that I would like to share with you today. What I want to share with you is the fact that our students really value the flex hour. And so I asked our student leaders to not only ask the regular three questions at their meeting last week, but I also asked them, if they were forced to pick, if you had to choose one or the other, there would be a pathway to having a later school start time and a flex period. There's a pathway to that, though it doesn't, it conflicts with some other things. And my understanding from our district youth council is that, when that choice is presented to people, flex seems to be the piece that most people are sharing, at least in the groups that we've been discussing with us so far. So part of that is that students have really grown to value that flex time, that decompression piece in the middle of the day. We're very happy to hear that. That's great. And when asking them to choose, so far, the anecdotal feedback that we've had through this, you know, listening session process has been flex. And when you first ask that question, kids stop for a minute and think about it. And then, what we have seen is people, "Oh, that's a tough one," or there are some people that, right away, that's where it comes. So I just want to share with you that dilemma, you know, that our kids are struggling with in terms of, "Yes, I'd like to be able to sleep later, and to be able to align my sleep with what my natural circadian rhythm is, but I really value that flex period." And it's really great to see kids who are thinking that through. The other part is that I did ask the group today, this morning, or noon time, with our, if we were to do, if we could get the end time earlier, if we kept the later start where it is, and we got the end time earlier, does that change the difference in people's thoughts about it? And the unequivocal answer, right away, was yes. And then I asked them, "So what's the time that you think you'd have to get to before your friends would think that this is an acceptable trade-off?" And there was some discussion, and I'm looking at our DYC member here, and 3:15 was the time that appeared to be something that people thought was reasonable. I think part of it is that many sports practices don't really begin right away after school, right? They usually take about a half an hour to get there. So that's some feedback that we have from students today. It's also feedback that we've had a little bit in all of these different sessions. So I'm bringing this up today because, in my 10 years here, there's been two other times where we've talked about schedule changes. And in both of those times, we talked about potentially reducing the number of instructional minutes in the school day. And when that has been brought forward, overwhelmingly, we heard from people saying, "No." We do have one of the longest school schedules in the Big Nine, and people have been very proud of that. So that is a part that, there are some other ways to get at the concerns that people have brought forward. If you were able to end earlier, obviously, quite a bit of the sports issue may not be completely solved, but it is dramatically reduced. The issues that we have with youth sports, which I did send all of the, Zach Pruitt from HCI helped me today, he sent a message to all of the coordinators of our youth sports associations. We've heard the concerns that youth sports would have in any kind of later start, but I wanted to hear directly from the heads of those associations. We think we know what we're going to hear from them, but we want to hear it right from them, if that makes sense, because we do have a facilities issue. And the fact is, if you start the varsity practices a little bit later, there's no question, right, that then the youth sports start a little bit later, which means those students finish later. So I need board members to think about that. Not asking for commentary on it tonight, but I'm trying to seed the work session. There are strategies and ways that we could go down where we could meet the minimum number of instructional hours required by the state at 173 school days, because we need to remember that if we change the start time, I've shared with you before, I don't think that we would be able to ask the community to support another one day a week where we start even later, right, for our professional learning. We just, I don't think that that's something that would be responsible on our part. So if we do that, remember, the original 10 years ago, the original memorandum of understanding with the Northfield Education Association that created the PLCs included adding an instructional day to make up for some of the lost instructional time that happened with that one-hour late start on Wednesday mornings. So we would need to go back to 173 days. We have to honor our commitments. So it's approximately 6.2 hours a day that you would need to have to be able to fulfill the state's requirements. Now, back when we were having these other discussions, one of the things that we were really concerned about at that point was weather, right, because we had a couple of days built in. We had a successful e-learning pilot last year, some really positive initial reaction to how we did e-learning, lots of very thoughtful comments about how we could improve it. We've implemented many of those suggestions for this year. So having a strategy to offset Minnesota winter weather is something we have now, that we didn't have in 2014, the last time that we discussed the schedule change. So I'm sharing these thoughts with you as a part of the updated plan, because we've been intentionally selecting one plan to begin with, right? And as we select one plan that aligns with the research to begin with, now we can start looking at some potential alternates, based upon the feedback that we're hearing from people. If we're hearing that athletics and sports are one of the bigger concerns, which we have to acknowledge, that is an issue, right? It would create some pressure on those groups. If there was a way to shorten the school day and to align that a little bit better to alleviate those concerns, is that something that we should start to model? Some of the other interesting things that we've heard is that there's been some talk that, well, if we were to really, if we were to go after this, would this be the same, would it be an opportunity for us to really rethink, for example, our high school schedule as the seven-period traditional academic day, the best that we can do? Or would this be an opportunity to think very differently about how we schedule our high school day? That is something that just doesn't happen in a weekend. You know, thinking about a different high school schedule takes months. You know, and frankly, you know, I'm not sure that people, it would be responsible for really them to put them in that detailed level of work, unless we were really serious about thinking we were going to make the change. So what we're trying to do is try to give us enough substance where we can have a great discussion, hear the things that we hear from people, based on their feedback, securing all of this information, and then trying to look at, if we really want to move forward this, how can we address the biggest concerns that are coming forward? And one of the challenges in listening to literally more than 500 or 600 people right now on this is that, when we talk about the science about, that we're really using as the impetus for a potential change, almost all the time, that discussion is very global, right? It's very, because you're talking about a group of teenagers, you're talking about a whole building, you know, worth of people who gain this benefit. And it's really ethereal, you know, it's, yes, teenagers will potentially have these benefits because of the, but we're talking about them as a group. And when we start to talk about the problems or the challenges, what always happens, and appropriately so, is they are much more, they're much more real, if you will, because you're hearing about a specific athletic team. You're hearing about a specific group of students who won't receive a similar benefit or may not receive a similar benefit. You're hearing about a family schedule that gets disrupted, that, right now, in this particular case, we can't, you know, we can't come to groups with, would there be a way to overcome it? You know, so there's, yeah, on the one hand, you have this very solid, you know, we know that it's incredibly solid medical research about the benefits for teenagers, and that's where that conversation ends, right? And then when we move over to the challenges, it is very, they are very real stories from real people, right? And so some of them that we know could happen, some of them are, "Well, what if this happens?" So there's some of it that is hypothetical in nature, though it's still very real to those people. This is why these discussions are so incredibly, I think, I think they're rich, but I also think that it's why they can become so difficult, because you are balancing, it's a classic systems-thinking dilemma, right? You know, thinking about the health and the overall approach with the system versus how those changes impact real people who you know and we see at church and in the grocery store, and downtown, and all those kinds of things. So as we keep getting the feedback, we've given you a plan of a start and an end time, basically, right? We can modify that, we can look at that in different ways, but I had not even really gone down the road of looking at any kind of change or reduction in instructional minutes, because that isn't something in the past, we've heard very clearly from people, was something that they were not interested in at that point. So this is, you know, the update, you'll see that the start and end times are a little bit different. This is based upon working with Benjamin Bus and actually making sure that we are overlaying the exact number of minutes that we currently have in the school day right now into this new potential model. So that is where we're at. I think that I have been energized by the process. It's been great to hear from people and to hear, you know, both the things that they think would be good for kids, and then the things that they think would be a challenge. There are a number of ways that those challenges or problems that have been brought forward to this point could be addressed. However, they would require some, you know, some decisions on our part. And right now, the other piece I just need to be really transparent about is that the transportation method, while doable at this point, is, would not be nearly what it is right now. And in fact, there's parts of the way that we'd have to do it that Nancy says. Can it be done? Sure. Should you do it? Probably not. And that is based upon, again, trying to get the elementary schools to start first, followed by the middle school, so that the high school can start the latest, so that they could get the maximum benefit in the morning. So there are some other tweaks that we can work through. I'm interested to hear what kinds of things the board might be interested in me putting together and modeling for the next step in this process on December 9th. And I am grateful, I'm sorry, the 16th, excuse me, thank you, Julie. I am grateful that we're having the discussion, right? There's a lot of times where school districts know there is something that they could explore that would be really good for their system, but they don't do that because they are afraid of the conversation that might come out. And we have never been afraid, you know, to have difficult conversations. And so regardless of where this leads, I'm really proud of the fact that we are having a robust discussion about it. And I appreciate Dr. Brian Hoff was at Thursday evening's meeting, and he was able to really specifically answer for people some very finite questions about the medical research that people have. And again, he's been such a great resource for us as we've explored this. So that's my update for this evening, just in terms of those, I want to make sure you saw that information from Nancy. Also, in the packet, you will see that there is a breakdown of rural versus non-rural busing. And the way that Benjamin Bus does that calculation is they're using 20, they're using a 20-minute bus ride, 20 minutes or more is being classified as rural, and 20 minutes or less is being classified as in-town. It doesn't exactly work out that way, but when they look at, how could they classify that, that was the strategy that's used. And you see the numbers that you have, as we've had several questions about, "Well, how many people do we really have riding those buses?" And you'll see that this is an example of where making sure we have the data is really important, so that you're able to see that data straight out. So that's my update this evening, some additional tweaks to the plan, some additional transportation information. And I'd be happy to answer any questions or hear any thoughts that you have at this point, knowing that we have a couple of hours scheduled on December 16th for it.
Okay, excellent. So just a reminder, the work session is on December 16th, and just, so you're aware, Benjamin Bus will be there for the work session, as well as Joel Olson, our athletic director, will be there as well. So Amy, you have a question?
So having a daughter that was involved in sports, I'm very much a sports supporter, but at the same time, I would love to have, for the 16th, some sense of the numbers of students who would be impacted, as far as, who participate in sports and would be impacted, plus if there's other activities that we should be considering, I would be interested in just having a sense of how many that is.
You bet.
Jeff?
I was wondering, you know, what's the cost of doing nothing, as far as, you know, the status quo and kicking the can down the road, so to speak, and delaying the decision? And originally, I think that this information came from medical research on that, but I mean, if you're really talking to your, you know, your kids, you know, I just, that's a general comment I just wanted to make.
Yeah, the, I'm not exactly sure, can you help me with the cost of doing nothing?
I mean, just, I wasn't talking about financial, I'm just saying, I mean, what is the cost of the status quo, just moving forward and not changing anything?
Well, you know, I think we'd be in the same spot, you know, that we are now. I think we have a schedule that has, we've had people point out, has been in effect for a long time, right? I mean, I think the general schedule that we have now has been in effect for a long time. So we would continue as we continue forward. We would not be, we wouldn't be taking full advantage of, you know, what the medical research says about students and aligning with their circadian rhythm, but we've not been doing that before, so it would be status quo at this point.
Other questions, Colin?
So I'd be interested in two things, and one, you know, could be part of the work session, or I don't know if we have a board meeting before that, is reminding us of the process, and then maybe where you think we are in terms of what you had thought the process would be like.
Sure.
I know you had a committee, or I don't know what it was, workforce, or whatever we were calling, a group of engaged staff and community members and students that worked before we even had the community sessions, and now we've been having the sessions of the different buildings and the two other sessions, as to just getting a, "Here's where we're at, this is where I thought we'd be," or, you know, just getting a...
Yep.
I don't have a sense of that. And then, for the work session, the 18th, the session on the 18th, a gentleman, a person, individual raised a question, and the way it was raised really got me thinking about the equity piece. And I don't know that we're going to come to, you know, that's a tricky, like, you were saying, it's thinking about the system, but really thinking about it from an equity lens. And part of it is knowing the rural, numbers of rural students, and part of it, thinking about, I don't know, what other data we could have to think, is it free, reduced lunch? The question, the way the person raised the question was, you know, will the students that will most benefit from the medical research, would be those that are, you know, in the higher-income, in-town, you know what I mean? Kind of, they did it much, much more eloquently than I am, but it really got me thinking about this decision and thinking about it from an equity standpoint. And I don't know what I'm really asking from you, Dr. Hillman.
I think that I do understand what you're asking. I think you're asking, is there a way to look at, to the best of our ability, how does this impact different, looking at it from different lenses with different stakeholders of students within the system? So trying to get a little greater detail about, and there's a few that we look at that are basically trying to disaggregate this the same way we disaggregate all of our data. And I will share one of the pieces that I did not share in my update, and I was remiss in doing so. We did have a Spanish translator for the second evening session. We have tried to provide those. We ended up with a translator at the first one, though she didn't know she would have been a translator, but we have learned over the years about trying to engage specifically our Spanish-speaking Latinx population. And so one of the things that Aaron Bailey and I are working on is setting up some face-to-face focus groups after, at the Greenbelt Park Community School, because there's an example of an important voice that we have not been able to get yet. And when we look historically at using survey data and things like that, specifically trying to secure feedback from our Spanish-speaking Latinx population, that has not been successful. The most successful way that we have been able to get those parents' voice is through face-to-face meetings at the community school. And so we have a very good relationship with a number of people at the community school. Aaron and I are setting up some pieces for that between now and the time that we meet on December. Again, trying to get that different lens that you're talking about, because trying to disaggregate the impact is an important piece. I agree. I thought that was a very insightful and thoughtful way to think through it, because as, again, as we talk about these benefits, we talk about them globally, because they're based upon, you know, medical science about circadian rhythm, which affects everybody. But again, what I'll tell you is that there are as many stories as there are people, you know, who have come to our sessions, because these impact people in very different ways. And that's, at the end of the day, that's what I think we are weighing, right? We're weighing this, you know, very solid medical research versus, here are all the things that would be very problematic, that are real to people, you know, in a change. Now, a lot of times, a lot of that stuff can get worked out in the long run, but is that, is that short-term, at least the short-term, real challenge worth what we would get by making the change, if that makes any sense?
Tom?
So there were, what, 20 or 25 students?
So there were, what, 20 or 25 students that gave feedback to the youth council?
Twenty-five, my understanding that it was 25 who were there, yes.
And then there were a smattering of the AP psychology students. Is there a way to get more input from the students, more and more, you know, the, the three questions that you ask the parents are probably not the three questions the students are interested in, more of how it directly affects them? And I don't know.
Yep, and we talked with the district youth council today that when we return from Thanksgiving break, we're going to be sharing another survey tool with students to get additional feedback from them as well.
Other questions come? No?
I attended all of the sessions that were available, and I was impressed with the thoughtfulness of the students and how articulate they were in responding to their thoughts. They did a very excellent job representing the student population.
Excellent, thanks. No other questions come? Rob?
Two things. First one is about timing. It seems like in order, a lot of, most of the problems are with the later end time of the day, and trying to get it as close to 3:15 as possible would be probably ideal. It seems like that, as you say, might require re-engineering the, the daily schedule, and that seems to be something that might require Principal Lear, who's not here now, so I'm just wondering about the, you know, this might, getting his input might require us to put off a final decision past January. We might, there's, in other words, the possibility in January that we might say, we can't make this decision now because we have to look at some deeper issues. So is that, would you say that's a possibility?
Well, I think that there's a lot of different pathways forward. As I've said these, at the meetings, the listening sessions, I've said, I really see there being three options that you would consider, and there are probably more, but this is just how I look at these decisions, is that one, as we get through this, you could certainly say, you know, thank you for the effort, you know, we wanted you to look into this, you looked into it, you've given us the information, we don't think that we can move forward. That's one option. The other option would be to try to look at something for next fall. And then the third option would be to say, well, we think this is important enough to move forward, but we wouldn't implement it for, I'm using another year as an example, so that we can have that line of demarcation saying, yes, we're going to change, here are the parameters that we want you to use and, you know, finalizing, you know, these, you know, very detailed school, because it's not just about a class period schedule, right? You know, you're talking about if, if you do something different, for example, with the number of class periods, let's just say that that's an example, that requires us to think differently about graduation requirements, right? Because right now, our graduation requirements are based upon, you know, seven class opportunities over four years, and that's the way we've always done it. So that is where, as you start to peel back the layer of the onion, if you start to think about things differently, you go to a whole nother level, which I think is probably okay to go to, it's just a matter of, that is the kind of thing that I think not only involves Principal Lear, but I think it involves all of you, you know, in terms of thinking about what are the graduation requirement, you know, are, are they able to stay the same? They possibly could. Are there other changes that we would make if we went to something more like a modular schedule or those kinds of things? So that's that next layer beyond, beyond saying we're going to have a different start and end time, which is really, you know, where we need to be at to begin with, and then starting to model, how are those things? So of course, it isn't your pleasure. I'm suggesting, I, I just really struggle, I know that some districts have made this decision to, to change the start of the school day beyond January, you know, I know some boards have taken the action in February or even a little bit. I just really think that if we get to that point, I just, we, I think we've gotten to know the community pretty well, and we start to push that beyond for thinking about 2020, I, I just think it's a little bit too far.
But we could talk about 2021.
Sure, yeah, absolutely.
And then, I'm interested because, I mean, we haven't done a schedule change that involves changing the start and end times, but we did add the flex time, which is a major schedule change that hadn't been done in 30, 40 years or something. So there's research on the benefits of the later start time, but I don't think we've done the flex time long enough to understand what the benefits of that are, and maybe those, I mean, the students like it, is the data we have now, but do we have any, can we get data on, is it affecting, you know, the things that we want it to affect, like positive impacts on mental health, et cetera? So, or even benefits on, you know, on student achievement, or any of the things that the later start time would affect? So, I mean, it's not, it's not what the medical research has focused on, having this pause in the middle of the day, but that's something that we might consider because this is something that we've already done, and it's, and we did it because we thought it was going to have these positive effects. So it might, you know, everybody else is doing this other thing, which is to change the start time, but maybe what we're doing also has benefits that we need to, to document.
Yep, I certain, I, if I recall correctly, I do think there were some studies that Principal Lear used when they were looking at the flex time, if I'm recalling correctly, but I don't think they have been as longitudinal as some of the research that we've been talking about when it comes to the later school start time and the impact on students' health. However, what we know from anecdotal data is that, you know, kids are telling us that they like it. And again, I think balancing that against looking at what longitudinal data do we have so far on that kind of pause in the middle of the day? What, what do we have? And I just don't have that answer for you tonight, but we'll, we'll work on getting that for the 16th.
Excellent. Tom?
Some of the people at the sessions asked about a trial period.
Yep.
Is that a possibility, or could that be looked into?
So the district youth council asked me that same question again this morning, and again, they likened it to when we ran the trial period for the flex time. And so my, my initial thought when that question came up at one of the sessions last week from a student, as I was thinking about flex time, all the kids in one building, you've got about 1,300 kids, it's a pretty self-contained environment, you know, you're not involving buses, you're not involving all these other things. I initially thought, well, that'd be very difficult. I, I still think it would be difficult because of course you're talking about trying to fix this, you know, trying to pilot it with 4,000 people, and, but as we continue to think about it, it's not out of the question. It is something that should, you know, should we go down this road, there's the possibility that we could do that. I had not gotten that far to really think about very, I think it's a possibility if that's something we really wanted to do, but it just is not the same. The high school students are looking at, we tried flex for, you know, a week, and that gave us some great data on how to make some changes, you know, for when we fully implemented it the next year. The issue is that this is a little bit of a different animal involving a whole lot of additional variables. In an ideal world, it'd be great, I would love to do that. The question is whether we can, we could pull that off with a lot of planning and thinking, I think is possible, I mean, it would help us, but the question will be, is it, is it too complex to try it if, if you haven't committed to it yet? Does that make sense, Tom?
Yeah.
Other questions come? Rob?
Well, I just think, I mean, even if we, going back to Jeff's comment about what if we do nothing, I think it is useful to have these conversations. I mean, I remember when I first got on the board, we had a discussion about maybe starting in early August, and we decided not to do that, but having the discussion gives you some sense of the values that you're working with and, and, you know, ranking the different things that are, you know, your goods. And it's useful to have that conversation, and you may find that there are other things that you find are greater goods than what you can get out of the, you know, the benefit of starting later. And I don't think it's wasted time, even if we decide not to do anything.
Well said, Rob.
I think having those discussions sometimes, first of all, I think it, even this, even if we were to stay exactly as we are, I think there's been some challenges that have been uncovered that are there regardless, you know, of changing the start time or not, there's some things that families have shared with us that, you know, I think we, we knew at a higher level, but hearing it directly from families about how a particular schedule or something like that is impacting them right now, and how making it even later would even be more difficult, we've uncovered some things to at least, you know, investigate and how could we improve those parts, you know, of the system. But you're, I completely agree, I'm, I'm grateful for the fact that we're at least having this discussion regardless of the decision that is made because if we just, if we just keep blindly going forward with the way that we have always done things, we will never truly improve. And so there are things that, you know, longstanding traditions that we, we should take a look at and have an honest discussion. And this is not a discussion that we can have just amongst our administrative staff or within our, just we, to really get what it's like, you know, we have to make sure that we talk to people at a higher level. And, you know, people have really come out and shared, and it's, it's wonderful. I mean, and we want an engaged community, right? And we certainly are moving to that point, which I'm thrilled with.
And I, I feel like, I mean, what we're, what you do in school is in the context of people's real lives, and we have, I mean, it gives us a better understanding of the constraints that different groups of people are having to deal with. So, I mean, and that might help us improve in other ways.
We are committed to continuous improvement, so yes, absolutely.
Excellent. No?
There is, I think this is a question in here somewhere, there is medical evidence that a later start is going to be an improvement in a lot of things, like students' academics, physical health, a number of other things. Is there statistical evidence that a later start, the students will go to bed, will sleep later in the morning?
Will they sleep later in the morning? So Dr. Hoff answered.
I would, but...
Yeah, well, Dr. Hoff answered this question, you know, last week, because I think the logical, I think the logical thing we all think about is that if we, if we just have a later start to the school day, kids will just stay up later. And what Dr. Hoff shared and what he shares, that the medical research says that that, while it's intuitively makes sense to us as adults, that the truth is that for most kids, that that doesn't happen, that they just stay up later because the melatonin kicks in, that's the sleep hormone, and people start to get sleepy. Now, there are also people who drink eight cans of Mountain Dew after 10 o'clock, right? Which, we'll mess with that. There are some pieces around, I've had quite a bit of feedback about this is, that people appreciate that we are looking out for the good of kids, but suggesting that this is a parenting problem. There's some folks who provide us that feedback, that, you know, tell your kid to go to bed. And what Dr. Hoff will say is that the medical research behind circadian rhythm and the release of melatonin transcends all that, it's biology, it's, it doesn't matter, you know, a lot of these other things, that the students would go to bed later simply because that aligns better with their natural sleep cycle. Now, how late they would want to sleep, right, will be dependent upon every individual. We all have our different requirements for the amount of sleep. The goal wouldn't be necessarily that kids get, I, I think this is sometimes a common misunderstanding, is that it isn't necessarily, yes, we would want kids to get more sleep, but it is about more aligning the quality of that sleep and that sleep with the natural sleep cycle. That is where the research really is outlined, and Dr. Hoff answered it probably more eloquently than I did this evening, but did I come relatively close? Okay, good.
Can I add to your answer?
Yes.
One of the links that maybe was in the packet, or maybe I ran across, did a study on just that question, where they had a group of students wear activity tracker watches for a while before the time, school's time changed, and then after, and they found that their average change in the amount of sleep for those students was 34 minutes. So the, and the, the start time had changed by an hour. So, and, and that was reported as being very good, it was more than the researchers actually expected, and it, and it also gave the students more time at home in the morning to get ready to eat breakfast, to do that sort of thing. So I can try to retract, you know, track down that article again, if that would be helpful.
No, if it was part of Brian's bibliography, we have that, but if you would want to send that along to make sure I've got it for you, I'd be happy to do that.
Okay. Tom?
Amy, I think it was the Seattle sleep study.
That sounds right.
That referenced it, yeah. So one of the, this just comment, it seems that one of the things that's become apparent is the community lacks the sufficient sports facilities to meet all the demand without it pushing later and later into the evening. And I suppose at some point, the community will have to address that.
Yeah, there's no question that one of the things that we hear over and over is that, boy, it'd be great if we had a few more gyms, right? We made a, we are making a, a very distinct improvement by adding something at the Green, New Greenville Park Elementary School, but we know that that is only a very small dip into what we think people would like. And there are, when we, I think that that's another important thing, when we study the other communities that have done this, you know, most of the ones that we have seen so far are districts that are more densely populated than we are, and they do have access to a larger number of other kinds of facilities, not just school facilities, but because of the greater population, population density, there's access to other kinds of athletic facilities that we just don't necessarily have here. So for example, if you look at a Dyna who has been doing this for 20-plus years, you know, they have a around 600-person-per-square-mile density. We are at 23. YZeta, you know, in the 400 range, you know, again, you do that, so there is that disparity in terms of even Inver Grove Heights, which is a system that is relatively close to our size, but being 20-some miles closer to the metro area. Again, I think it's a little bit of a different ballgame. Now, we are seeing, we are not the only, as I mentioned before, we're not the only big nine school to be having this discussion. The Rochester School Board, you know, has some proposals that they are looking at in front of them right now, they're a couple of months ahead of where we're at. You are looking at that Mankato is also looking at moving this. Now, both of those districts, though, I think, and it, again, just in being totally transparent, when I, when we research the other districts that have made these changes, I can't say this for a Dyna, but when you think about other districts who are making the change, the other part that sometimes, what I've seen more often than not, this is the case in YZeta, this is going to be the case for sure in Mankato, and I perceive it to be the case in Rochester, you also are talking about districts that are expanding their number of schools, so they're adding a building, or they're adding two buildings, or they're changing their transportation model to be more efficient. So the discussion about the start time isn't necessarily as altruistic as it is, you know, about, that we're having, there's another disruptive force that is saying, well, we're looking at these changes right now, we might as well look at, can we align this as well? So one of the things that I've learned as part of this process is that you cannot model your approach based on another district. You start to get to Outstate Minnesota, many districts have been starting at 8:30 or later for years, and it's got to do with the geographic area that they have to bus, and the fact that it does go back to some of the agricultural schedules as well. So there, there are no two places that are exactly the same, you can learn a lot of different things from people from how they've addressed it, but there's no one pan to see to say, yep, that's the plan that you go with because everybody is just different enough.
Other questions, comments? Well, thank you to board members for all the input that you gave tonight, and specifically thank you, Dr. Hillman, for all the work that you are doing on gathering this great information for us. As I think what we continue to see and what we continue to evolve, and Ellen, I appreciate you, you asking for the recap of the process, we've seen that by no means is this, you know, as one board member so insightfully said, this is not a slam dunk. There are lots of issues, and, you know, we look forward to really reviewing it. The work that's been done is really the collection of the data, collection of the feedback, and then it will be the board's work next to really decide how we, we feels best to move forward. So we appreciate all of the care and the consideration and the amount of thinking that is done at all levels of buildings right now in terms of trying to figure out, you know, where we're at and if, and ensuring that the board has everything they make to, need to make an informed decision. So thank you for that. And then thank you too for the input that you provided, Dr. Hillman, tonight in terms of additional information you want to see. So I know this is something that we've all been thinking about a lot and doing our own research and really having conversations with community members, and that's informed some of the requests we made tonight. But December 16th is still a ways off, so as board members have additional information that they want as part of that work session, I mentioned Benjamin Bus will be there to really delve into the bus schedule with us. Joel Olson, our athletic director, will be there to, so we can really understand the impact to co-curricular. But if there's other information, be sure that you get that to request to Dr. Hillman so he has time to, to get that for us. So, okay, thank you. We will move on now to policy committee recommendations. Dr. Hillman?
Yes, so what you'll see in your packet is the first iterations of policy changes coming out of the policy... coming out of the policy committees. You remember last year, we reformalized our district policy committee. We have all of our policies on a four-year rotation, so that every policy, at least every fourth year, is getting reviewed. This year, the first batch of policies that we're providing to you are the 300 policies. There's not a lot of changes, as you will see. These have all been vetted by the policy committee that includes Dr. Iverson, Dr. Hardy, and Mr. Stratmon, as well as we have a couple of student participants as well who are on that committee, Simon McDonald and Jack Rizzo. And so we've been dutifully churning through all of these. The 300s were pretty low-hanging fruit, frankly, comparatively to what the other ones we're discussing, sort of springing for those for first reading for this evening. And all of the changes that are being proposed, or any of it, there are some policies that, where there are not any changes being proposed, but we're simply asking you to reaffirm our commitment to that policy at this point, so that we can show to the community that we have reviewed every single policy that is there, if that makes sense. So this is first reading, we're not asking for any action this evening, but we're just sharing it with you for that purpose.
Any questions, comments? We will take action then, this is first reading, so we will take action on the, these policy committee recommendations at our board meeting on December 9th. Okay. Our next, and last item for discussion is start time for school board meetings. So we had a really good discussion at our last meeting, and I actually went back and listened to the, to the, the board meeting, because I wanted to be sure that, you know, I had a good perspective and an understanding of where everyone was at, and I appreciated that everyone weighed in. What, what seemed to be a consensus was that 5:30 was not going to be attractive to anyone in terms of, of making a change, nor was necessarily making a change. So what I wanted to do is just have that item for discussion again tonight, and then maybe after discussion, take a, just a straw poll in terms of where everyone's at. One thing, you know, we, we did talk about the parameters of making a decision and really focusing on what's right for our staff or board and our community. And, you know, every board is, you know, we have different culture, different culture and expectations within the community for our work, and, and when we meet, as I said, is, is part of, of the work we do. So based on sort of the discussion we had and understanding that this is something we can or, or can do and, or don't necessarily have to do, but I thought maybe to get some parameters around the discussion tonight, I would just put out there the initial discussion point of starting at 6 o'clock, and, and just weighing in where board members are sitting with that time, knowing that 5:30 was just not attractive to anyone. So if we started the discussion saying, can we, and do we want to make 6 o'clock work? What would be the board's position on that? And then, you know, take, take the discussion from there. So if anyone would link to weigh in. Jeff?
I'm not opposed to six either.
Okay. Other questions, comments, discussion? Rob?
I'm not opposed to six either. I'm just interested because I think that this board making the decision, I mean, will, this board isn't going to change until January 2021. There are no young parents on the board at this moment, there are no farmers who might have chores on the board at this moment, so I'm just wondering what the impact would be for a board that looks a little bit different from the board we have now. I mean, obviously, the decision can be revisited at the organizational meeting in 2021, so I'd be fine with it for, for us. I think it's something that has to be brought up again, possibly if the board looks a little bit different, because I think maybe, you know, the, the issue that Noel brought up about family time, I mean, for me, 6 o'clock is right when dinner gets on the table, some people, that's the case, I don't know. But I'm, I'm fine with making the adjustment, but other people, it's harder to make the adjustment, so.
Others? Amy?
So, I'd like that we're looking at what's right for the community, and I think that's the biggest question. For me, I would have several thoughts about a 6 o'clock time. One is, what do we do with any receptions or reports that would normally happen before the time? Are we now moving them up to 5 o'clock or 5:30? You know, so that's just a question to think about. The other thing is, you know, I have a professional career as an event planner, so 6 o'clock is kind of like the food hour, and when you plan an event, if you're doing it at 6 o'clock, you have to make sure you have substantial food there for people. So I come from that framework of sort of working around meal times. And so while on a personal level, it's just me and my husband at home, I can make whatever time work that's good for everyone, it's not, I don't have to worry about giving up family time now, I do wonder about how it impacts other people who might be trying to come to the board meetings, and, you know, if we put it right at the dinner hour, whether they'll just say, oh, it's not worth it, you know, I gotta get food on the table, but I wanted to go talk. Or maybe they'll come at 6 o'clock and just do their three-minute piece and then leave and be back at home for dinner. So I just am curious what other people think about how that timing would affect community members.
It's like the late, later school start discussion all over again. For me, 6 o'clock would work, and, you know, it's almost one of those things where you won't please everybody, no matter what you do. So your, your point about maybe someone will come and speak for three minutes and leave, that could work versus coming at 7, when it's time for bedtime or whatever, you can, we can have all kinds of arguments, or, you know, scenarios that will, will and will not work. I still do have two kids in, in school, I think the only one on board with kids in school. They're, they're older, so it doesn't affect my situation either. I know for getting off work, there's always things that come up as I'm walking out the door, and that sure will take two minutes and 10 minutes later to still dealing with it. You want to get it done because other people can then go on with their life. So having, having the break, certainly between 5 and 6 is worthwhile. 5:30 wouldn't work, and 6, 6 will, and then, I guess harsh circadian rhythm changes too, so by, you know, by 9 o'clock, I'm starting to wear out. And so I think having an earlier time where we might have a chance to go home, freshen up, whatever, grab a snack if nothing else, and then, then come in and do this, and then go home and be done for the day, I think is worthwhile consideration. So I'm, I'm good with 6.
Jeff, I think, I'm sorry, I missed someone's hand. Is it, Jeff, I'm sorry.
I was gonna say, not to point out to be kept that obvious here, but I mean, you know, we're Northfield, we don't always do things the way everybody else does, but, you know, all the times that we're with the conference in here, there's never any discussion around 6:30. I mean, that was never, it's never brought up or whatever, so we're talking about 6, but we never, you know, brought that up to talk about. But I do like, you know, the idea that the things, and part of that too is I, you know, I do want to honor the teachers and administrators, and I think anybody that's going to make a point for getting to a public meeting, 6 o'clock's not unreasonable. And I do want to get, I mean, I know that that's a big gap in there, and I am concerned about, and I know you serve at the, the board, based on what the board wants to do, but I, I want to honor younger families and be able to get home, take care of your kids, and do whatever else, so that, part of that is, you know, the 6 o'clock. But, and tradition says, I think too, when you're talking about, one of the points that you're making, I think, Rob, is even if, if the face of the board changes, and I think traditionally, older school, things like that, yeah, there were farmers and things on the board. I don't know when the last time we had a farmer on the board.
George Paulson.
George Paulson, 10 years ago. 10 years ago. So, and I mean, I encourage farmers to run, so get out there and run for school board, but, so a lot of that maybe has to do with the later starts. I mean, there's pros and cons to both, but to get started a little bit earlier, 6, and I, I figured a couple other people chime in and see what they have to say.
So is the board wanting to react to Jeff's thought around 6:30? Ellen?
So I've been thinking a lot about this too, and working in town, I could make 6 o'clock work, 5:30 would be, I would have a hard time being here on time on a regular basis. I think it would, I would just, you know, we'd have to try to figure it out. But I, the concern I had for 6 was something that Noel brought up last time, which was people commuting and future school board members, and, and I don't, you know, as, as Rob pointed out, you know, a future board could change the time again. I know I used to commute to Fairbough, and previous to that, I commuted to Rochester, and, and I always had a husband commuting up until recently, and that 6 o'clock would be harder, I think, if you weren't working in town. But, you know, we don't, just like the later school start times, we're trying to, we can only represent what we know, and as, as I said, I think working in town, 6 o'clock, you could, you could make work.
Other questions, comments? So we were then, are we wanting to consider 6:30, or are we just 6 o'clock is where I'm hearing people, yeah, Amy?
So I, I guess I'm thinking 6:30 is even a little better, but I tend toward the later time anyway. And part of that is because we have occasions where we have events ahead of the meetings, and I think we need to, you know, think of that. And then also, I worry that if we start at 6 o'clock, we're still going to end up going till 9. And so I wonder, I mean, it'd be great if we started at 8, but I wonder if it almost gives us permission to have a long, I didn't say start at 8, end at 8. It gives us permission to have a longer meeting if we start earlier. So if we did start earlier than 7, whatever time we start, I think we still have to have an agreement that we're going to try to keep our meetings within, you know, a two-hour time period, if that's what we think is right, so.
Well, I think that we would then just have the, board would do a motion to extend past three hours, regardless of our start time. That, that three hours becomes, more than three hours, just becomes a very long and potentially ineffective meeting for people. So I think that if we were to say 6:30, then we would need a motion to have discussion past 9, or meet, have a meeting extend past 9:30. So we would just adjust that as well.
No.
I've been around the block a few times on this issue in the last two years, and I've thought about it quite a bit since the discussion the other night, a couple weeks ago. So my thoughts that I wouldn't change it. I think the reason for changing it are significant, but I think the reasons for not changing it for the culture of this community is more significant. For example, Ellen spoke of commuting. I never got in the downtown, 6:15 or 6:30. If I was going to see my kids, and if I was going to have any time at all with, with the family, this would be a problem. Now, it's only, it isn't every night, occasionally, but I think it's significant. The other issue that I feel is, I'm not sure there's a good reason to change it. You know, we, we say we get drowsy, well, maybe our, our clock is screwed up or something. But I'm not sure there is a good reason to change it. It's been this way for, I should say, years, and I think the culture of the community has gotten comfortable with it. So if, if I were to vote tonight, I'd, I'd vote against any change.
So I think we've all weighed in. I'll just weigh in and say, you know, if, if the board's amenable to 6:30, I think there's some value to meeting earlier. I do think that 6:30, our community can, can get here for public comment. What, what the biggest consideration for me is our freshness as board members. I think that meetings that go late, past 9 o'clock, I think that it's really difficult for us to, you know, I think we get tired, and I think there's a lot of, to our credit, as I said last time, we do a lot of discussion. I mean, just this one item, we've all given it a lot of thought and consideration, and we all really want to articulate our views and our, and, and the, the own thoughts we have about it, and make sure we're making the right decision. And I think an important factor to consider is the freshness of our administrators, that we particularly later in the evening when we're doing items for individual action, and we have to make some, some decisions, and we're asking them to maybe, you know, respond to some questions or some, you know, things that we, you know, want some sort of information. And I think that we have to recognize it's been a very long day for our administrators, and these meetings are really important, and we, we get a lot of good feedback, and we ask Dr. Hillman and, and other administrators here for, for some really detailed and thorough responses to questions. So I just think that the, the dialogue and the discussion can be, can happen even if it's a half hour earlier. I think that, that can be significant, or can be, you know, a benefit to all of us who are trying to make these decisions at a very late time in the evening when we've all had very full days. And I think that the dinner hour of 6:30 seems like that might, you know, help that a bit, but I think when you look at, you know, we have nine months where we have two meetings a month, and then we have, you know, three months where we're only meeting once a month. So again, you know, there's some disruption, but we're not asking people to totally, you know, not ever have dinner with their families again, you know, that there's, there's, you know, meetings don't occur, you know, every single night. So, Amy?
I think you make a great point about the administrators, and we have four of them here, and I would like to ask if any of them would be willing to talk about what their ideal timing is. Hate to put anybody on the spot, but do you go home before the meetings or not? Do you want to be home with your kids and then come back, or do you want to try to be home for bedtime? If you could have the perfect meeting time, what would it be?
So my personal opinion is I go home and have supper with my kids, and usually leave about 6:30 or 6:40 to come here. My kids get ready for bed at 7, so moving it to, to 6:30 shortens the time, or 6:00 shortens my time for supper with them. And none of the options would even allow me to make it home for bedtime, which is totally okay.
My response is the exact same. No, I mean, I, I appreciate being home, to be able to go home and, I mean, Val and I are probably, if you are taking all the administrators together, we have the youngest children, so we have one, but I appreciate the time to go home, I get to have dinner with my kids, I get to see them. Mine are heading to bed between 6:30 and 7, and if I have a break from that for one day too, that's okay, but I love to, to be able to have dinner with them and see them between the meetings, and I also go home between the meetings.
Oh, yeah. I will show up when I'm told. I, I don't have-
So will we.
Yes, of course. I'm in a different circumstance, you know, than, my children are obviously all either in college or in, in high school, and so, you know, for me, it's, they're still up when I get back home, and it's making sure that they get to bed, you know, in terms of that part. So, and my style is that I just stay here. That's just, that's the way that I work the best, and not saying it's right, wrong, or otherwise, just it's the way that it has worked for, for me. So that goes back a ways of my wife saying, don't come home and get them riled up and then leave, because that was the, that's how that got started in our family, the other way around. So I think that you're, I think there are probably, when you think about the people who we invite to these meetings, building principals, you know, other folks, all of them are going to have different circumstances as well. And I think at the end of the day, I think that I, again, appreciate the thought that we know that we are one of the later starting meetings in the community, you know, however we think it through, we look at it, and making sure that we're doing the right thing for the community.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, Amy. So now that we've all weighed in, I guess I'll just show of hands of board members-
Claire, this is not a vote, it's a draw poll.
Yeah, it's just a straw poll of those who are open to making a change, just, you know, and then we could decide the time, but are, are feeling like there's some merit, there's some value-
merit, there's some value, there's a reason to make a change. And in your mind, there's enough reason that you think we should make a change. And, you know, again, we came into this saying, if we keep it at 7:00, we keep it at 7:00. But it's just a point of discussion, since it's been decades since we've talked about what time the board starts their meetings. So maybe just a show of hands for those who want to change the start time. And then we'll go off simple majority. If enough people want to keep it at, you know, enough want to stay at 7:00, we'll stay at 7:00.
Have some quick questions?
Sure.
To the ladies, I was confused on your answer a little bit too. Do you really like the 7 o'clock start time? Or do you, I mean, if you're going to go home? You know, make an opinion out of it, it's because we're asking you the question. I'd like to hear a firmer opinion.
Do I love staying till 9:00? No. Do I love having supper with my kids? And would that be my preference? Yes.
Could you do that if we started at 6:30?
Yeah, we just shorten my time with them by half an hour.
What about 6:00?
If we did 6:00, I probably wouldn't go home. Because by the time my husband gets done and we pick up the kids and actually get home, it's time for me to turn around and come back. And that's not worth it for riling them up and then saying, "See you later." So that's just my personal opinion.
Thank you.
So we'll just do a straw poll, because again, we would establish the formal start time at our organizational meeting in January, but we would start that organizational meeting at the time that we come to consensus here. So those who are supportive of changing the start, or of keeping the start time to 7:00, let's see who really want to just maintain the 7 o'clock start time. 1, 2, 3, 4. Okay, then we'll maintain the start time of 7:00 p.m. Thanks, everyone. As always, everyone gave it some really good thought and we appreciate that. So it's all good. Let's see, the next item is committee reports. Those were in your.
Table file, yep.
Those were in the table file. So let me go through those quickly. It's 2 of my committees that I serve on. Again, committee reports are the opportunity for board members to talk about the work that they're doing in their positions as liaisons throughout district committees. My first report is on CE, Schools for Equity in Education. As our group that we are a member of, we had a general membership meeting. It was really interesting meeting. Dr. Hillman and I attended it. And I'll just give a really brief overview. It was great. Commissioner of Education, Mary Catherine Ricker, was there. And State's Education Finance Director, Tom Melcher. And they were talking about, and I know we all kind of cringe a bit when we hear "school finance working group," because Governor Palenti had done one, Governor Dayton had done one, and then Governor Walz had asked that a school finance working group be convened, which they met for the first time in September, just this September, talking about some of the focus that they will do in terms of, they were really talking, often use the term "pressure points" in terms of where some of the, this particular stress areas of school finance. So funding streams with an emphasis on special ed and English language learner, transportation, school support, and levy funding. They are taking a bit of an innovative approach, I think, in really seeking case studies from districts. Again, talking about the global issues, but then really drilling down to what does this, how is this playing out in individual school districts? There was the thinking that this work was really going, is always valuable, but that we have a governor and Governor Walz who they feel will be very interested in the work and really try to make the work meaningful in terms of establishing his 2021 legislative session. So we are all cautiously optimistic. We know education funding is just incredibly complex. But again, we, I think we have to look at it as very positive that they're really drilling down again into the complexities of the funding that we receive and how maybe that some different approaches can be identified and certainly more funding, hopefully to follow what some of their recommendations are. There's, of course, an incredible group of people working on this with the full support of Governor Walz. Mary Catherine Ricker is a former teacher. She said, you know, she really understands boots on the ground and, you know, some of the challenges that all districts are facing with funding. So it was, it was a really, it was an inspiring update, because again, we're cautiously optimistic that some real good work will be done. On a disappointing note, Tom Melcher, who is just the guru of school financing, as they say, there's probably one person in the entire planet that understands it, and he is one. And he's actually announced his retirement in February, which, as Dr. Hillman says, anytime you hear.
Heart palpitations.
Tom Melcher and retirement in the same sentence. It's disappointing. But to his credit, he is very engaged and committed to the work of the finance work group. So he will stay through to the end, which they anticipate having final draft around September. And then they would present to Governor Walz again for his 2021 legislative session will be a funding year. So, yes. Can you remind us when the day at the Capitol is? Oh, yes, thank you for bringing that up. I meant to put that. It's the March 3rd. It's Tuesday, March 3rd, Day at the Capitol. Thank you, Ellen. As you know, we've gone every year to speak with legislators. It's open to all board members. We, you know, we would be doing work on behalf of the board and can post the, you know, that we would be there in terms of open meeting laws, so we won't need to be restricted there in terms of board members that are able to attend. So thank you for bringing that up. So then the other thing, and I will, we will continue to talk about Day at the Capitol, but if anyone wants to put under schedule Tuesday, March 3rd. The other thing, we did formally approve the 2020 Legislative Platform for Schools for Equity in Education. So there are copies of that. It does say draft, but it was formally approved on Friday. So, any questions on the governor's finance working group? Yeah, it's exciting stuff. On the back is my Northfield Forward report. And Ellen, your question around the, and Nancy Antoin talking about the spiraling curriculum. So one of the things, it was a PLC presentation done by the 5th grade mathematics district-wide. And I do want to say their names because these staff members did incredible work. It was Paula Bargary, Becky Malika, April Osterman, and Shelley Stolken. And what they did was take Everyday Math 4 and really drill down with the MCA standards. And they have, they've really come up with a new, a new approach. And one of the overarching goals was to establish a culture of learning and utilizing a growth mindset. And really talking about just the anxieties of math and really helping kids to get through that and really trying to create the confidence and putting kids at ease with math. And one of the breakthroughs really that they felt was really, because they basically wrote this curriculum and to augment EM4, and they had binders and are already working through so much of it. And it was really exciting and their passion was just crazy, off the charts, and excitement for what they were seeing. But what thing they saw most significantly was the confidence students were getting when they were staying with a concept just a little bit longer. Even those, you know, regardless of where students were in terms of their mastery, they just felt even that much more confident that they were staying with it. And so they're doing a shorter assessment cycle, which, you know, Hope Langston has talked about on and off as well. But some of the, just the initial assessments they've done has shown 90% student growth, or 90% of the students showing growth. So the initial, you know, again, we forget, we're only sort of into, I guess, almost December. But they did a lot of this work over the summer and really seeing really great results in the classroom for their work. And so aligning it with the MCA standards, obviously, bodes well for the success of the spring MCAs. So Northfield Forward, Mary Grace Hansen always does an amazing job with getting a PLC group to help us understand. And, you know, we just, it's always great to be reminded of the really, really good work that they do. And what was really great about this is it's district-wide. So they, all district-wide 5th grade math. So sometimes we see within an individual building, but this group is working district-wide, which was, which was great. And so segueing to that, of course, is PLCs and the evidence of practice documents that the PLCs do. And new, now would be a new approach for Northfield Forward was to review the evidence of practice documents after the first quarter. So as a group, we delved into all of the EOP documents and provided feedbacks to the teaching staff, which they will be reviewed with by their building principals. So it's just another really point of the evolution of Northfield Forward and how their work is just getting that much stronger and really trying to support the work of classroom teachers and other administrators. So that was really good. And so then Northfield Forward will review second and third quarters, so can see, you know, just the progression of the changes that are made. And some of the input was really excellent that people were able to provide these teachers in terms of their, what their work for PLCs. So any questions? I kind of talked fast, it's getting late, so I wanted to just highlight the work of CE and Northfield Forward. On another note, I did want to ask board members, we have had not many committee reports come through, so I'm just wondering if the timing of when we do them, or if board members just, for whatever the work of their committees, they haven't been able to share, or if anyone has some feedback. Again, we're always looking at things we do, and this is one aspect of our agenda item that we haven't always had input, so wondered if it was still something people wanted on the agenda? Yes, Amy?
I'm on the Community Services Board.
Yes.
And we always get regular reports from Erin, so I just defer to her reporting.
Okay. Other comments board members have on their committees and wanting to do reports? Tom?
Our committee only had 1 form in the last 4 months, so it's, we don't always have much to report, but I'd be happy to do it when we do.
Okay, we'll keep it on as an item then, because it is good to know what liaison work board members are doing on different committees. Okay, so that is our last item, the committee report before we move on to the consent agenda. Is there, reminder, there were some items in the personnel file or in the table file to add to the consent grouping. Is there anything anyone would like to pull from the consent grouping? Is there a motion to approve the consent? Moved by Amy. Is there a second? Second by Tom. All those in favor of approving the consent grouping, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We'll move on for items for information. We'll begin first.
Individual action.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. What am I doing? Items for individual action. Okay, so let's move on. There are 2 items for individual action. The first one is the fiscal year 2019 audit. Is there a motion to approve the 2018-19 audit report as presented? Moved by Ellen. Is there a second?
Second.
By Amy. Any questions, comments? We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Our second item is the non-substantive, substantive policy changes, excuse me. We reviewed it last week. Dr. Hillman presented the information around just the slight policy changes and the ability of the district to make those changes, to mostly citing different cases that support the policy. So is there a motion to authorize the superintendent's office to update Minnesota State, Minnesota School Board Association model policies used by the district for non-substantive changes without further board approval? Is there a motion? Motion moved by Amy. Is there a second? Second by Tom. Any questions or comments? I kind of gave a brief update, but we had reviewed it thoroughly at our last board meeting. No? Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, now we can move on to items for information. Dr. Hillman, construction update number 17.
Yes, and I think you heard the biggest excitement of the construction update with the fact that Bridgewater will begin to move tomorrow, which is very exciting. And so they got the certificate of occupancy this afternoon, and I did hold some tours for Bridgewater, for folks to come and tour Bridgewater on Saturday. It was not, we'll just say it was not heavily attended, but the people who came got some really great one-on-one time with me. So I think we look at that. I think the other part is that we just recently are preparing to hold the subcontractor kickoff was actually held last week. We've continued to work through the user groups for the Longfellow project and also for the renovated Greenville Park project. And in addition, one thing I want to point out is that we officially moved the construction cam from Bridgewater to Sibley.
That's a good question.
And so the Sibley construction cam is now up and rolling. I'm not sure if they have updated the links yet on the website.
No, it was this afternoon.
But it was just this afternoon, and again, that will be up very quickly. But very exciting to see that process moving, because if you've been by there, there's a big pile of dirt. So they continue to move ahead. I know that Jim Colseth, talking with us today, said if you are at the new Greenville project, you can actually really start to see where the cafeteria will be. And just, I think it's at the end of next week, the end of next week, where they're going to bring in the precast gym walls. So you'll go from nothing to having something that looks very much like a building in the same day, because when they push up those precast walls for the gym, they have to tie in the roofing and all of that kind of stuff right away. Structural steel is arriving, and they've made some great progress in the last several months. So we continue to move ahead with these projects, and I cannot adequately tell you what good decisions we made by using old. The process that they use for this is just frankly amazing. It brings a lot of discussion to the table. There's a lot of watching the sausage being made right in front of you, because, you know, you are really involved with it. We're in a lot of other strategies. It just ends up coming back to you at the end. But a lot of people have seen a lot of iterations, and then Knutson Construction just top shelf in terms of how they have addressed and handled. I'm just going to give you just one example that's not part of the update, but we did have a concern that was brought actually to the fence last week, the construction fence, by a neighbor in the Greenville Park neighborhood. And the person found someone and she gave them a letter. It's a handwritten letter. Within minutes, we were notified that there was this letter about these concerns, specific to some of the traffic in front of, in front of, on Lincoln Parkway. The kind of service that we get is Josh Cooper, our Knutson Construction contact, that afternoon went to this person's home, knocked on their door, and said, "We want you to know we got this feedback. You know, can we just, I want to make sure we understand what your concern is." And there was a lot learned from that. While we may not be able to make a lot of changes that would have remedied the concerns the person brought forward in the letter, they were very pleased that someone had taken it seriously, that someone had come to their, you know, their home to answer the questions. And I do think there's some things that that person was assured of that made the situation better. So just, that's one example of how Knutson has delivered as promised, and frankly, even better than they promised. So that is the construction update for this evening.
Questions or comments? Okay, yeah, it's just all so exciting. Excellent. It'll be fun to see the time lapse camera at Sibley, too. The fundraiser report.
Val?
Yes. So as part of the GAZB 84 Change of Student Activities, there's a segment in there that says I will provide a fundraiser report. So that's what this is. It's just basically summarizing since July 1st, which was the beginning of our fiscal year, any fundraisers that were approved and completed, when they were completed, what they were fundraising for, and the net revenue that they brought in, basically. So that's all I have. So if you have any questions, I will attempt to answer them, but I was not super involved in actual fundraising. So I more or less just compiled the report from the approved forms, so.
Questions?
Rob? So there's a column for purpose. So do-
So there's a column for purpose. So does everything have to go for that purpose? Or is there just a fund that could be used for whatever purpose they decide they need?
Yep, it's in a general account designated for that activity, so they could choose to use it for something else. The the rules governing the student activity funds is that the students have to sign off on the expenditure, so whatever would be determined would be the collective group's decision. If it was different than as they had originally intended.
But they do identify a purpose for the fundraiser.
Yeah. And most of these, once we've done this a couple of times, you'll see they're doing the same things each year, raising funds for the same types of things.
And then I was just wondering about things like moving refrigerators at St. Olaf, I mean, if they're like insurance implications for some of these, or liability, like if a refrigerator drops on the student or something.
That's an excellent question, so because this is the first time we put this together, I didn't even realize that that was a thing we were doing, so. I do have a few questions for Joel Olson, just to talk through just the different things and what, I mean, technically, they would be, it would be a school-sponsored event, so I would see us having to cover that as a student injury, but, yes, we have a few questions generated from this.
And that is a little more common. I think you'll see there are times when there is a group that has to do some kind of move, or they're seeking some assistance in a particularly physically challenging piece, and you will see some of our athletic teams you know, asked to participate in it. Something that was not a fundraiser, but our cross-country team helped with that downtown meal, because they knew that they could get stuff to the tables and back quickly. There are, you know, there are ways that people look at our athletic teams to say, "Hey, if you have the physicality to be able to help us with this, to do this, we'd be happy to donate to you if you're willing to assist it with us," so most of the time, that's not something that our athletic teams are posting, looking to move 20 refrigerators or whatever it is, it's someone calls and says, "Hey, if you, you know, if you could help us with this project, we will be willing to donate X number of dollars to you," so.
Okay, thank you, Val. Yeah. Oh, so our last and really exciting item for information, really on, so I feel so proud to be able to announce that our, near and dear to all of our hearts, board member Noel Stratmon is going to be honored for 40 years of service on the Northfield School Board of Education at the Minnesota MSBA's conference luncheon on Thursday, January 16th, from 11:30 to 12:30. So, we would like to see which board members are able to attend, would have a table and have lunch. Again, it's a social occasion for the board, so there is a policy covered in the open meeting policy, so we are able to all share in this wonderful honor for Noel, if your schedules allow. Noel is the fourth most tenured school board member in the state of Minnesota since they've been tracking it, so it's just an amazing, amazing accomplishment. I think when we all think about how long we have been on the board, we can multiply that by four and five and get to Noel's number, so. You know, exactly. So it's crazy, and it's just-
It's the best meeting in town.
I mean, it's just unreal, so, you know, again, thank you to MSBA for honoring Noel at the luncheon, and for board members that are able to be there, we can take care of the registration. Yes, Amy?
Well, first of all, sign me up. I know I miss it, but secondly, I'm curious about the statistics that you mentioned. Is he the fourth longest-running ever board member in Minnesota, or is he currently the fourth-running longest? Is it, you know, current thing, or is it-
Sure, no, that's a good question. I believe there's a gentleman who has been on the board for 50-plus years and is still serving, so the, yes. So, this award has not been given often.
I don't buy green bananas.
So, I mean, it's just, we just, oh, I mean, that's just incredible, and I think you deserve first of many rounds of applause, maybe we'd be the first group to applaud that. It will be, it will be great for all board members who are able to be there and share and just be the accolades accolades that you deserve for this, for the 40 years. That's just incredible. All right, so that was the-
Blame Jane McCloy. Forty years ago. You ever considered school work?
Boy, that was, that was crazy.
Thank you, Jane.
Yes, exactly, exactly. Okay, that's last for items for information. Future board meetings, Monday, December 9th, and then for regular school board meetings, then we do, as we said, the work session is Monday, December 16th at 5:00 p.m. Thank you to board members for being flexible with that additional meeting in the month.
Question? How long do we expect that meeting to go?
We would not anticipate going past two hours.
Two hours, yeah, we usually limit our work sessions to two hours.
Okay, yes, and then, you know, again, if we decide, you know, at that meeting that there's still enough information or other things that we have to consider and want to do something in early January, we can make the decision at that time. So speaking of January, our next, then, in the 2020 year, Monday, January 13th, organizational board meeting will be followed by the regular school board meeting, and we will continue to meet at 7:00 p.m.
Can I just point out, too, that on December 9th, as was indicated earlier this evening, we will also hold our Truth in Taxation hearing, and of course, that it does no longer needs to be a separate thing, that is part of our board meeting on the 9th, but there will be an extra opportunity for public comment at that meeting as a result of that, so, just so people, I know it's, if you received your tax statement, you know, that you saw it on there, plus, we just want to make sure that everyone knows that that will also be the truth in taxation for the district.
Okay, excellent, thank you. So with that, I ask for a motion to adjourn. Moved by Noel. Is there a second? Second by Amy. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned.